I think we should turn to some of those. And for the reason why, okay? Do you have any words or presentations? No? Okay. All right, then we'll just get started with things and, um...
First, you have a question. Process of consensus.
I move that the filing consensus item be approved as listed in the illustrative memorandum A through N.
Discussion, all the paper? Aye. All the papers, motion carries.
Moving down to item O, approved policies, recommended motion. I move that the filing policies be approved.
Mr. Campbell wants to...
I would like to move to table these and send them to the legal and policy committee for review and possible recommendation to approve back to the board, recommendation to approve with modifications or no recommendation whatsoever. Set aside the policies directly to the board. I'd like them to go through that first step of the committee level and then go from there and set the whole thing through.
So your motion is table until we come by that legal policy?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the papers, motion carries.
Item P, approved first reading of policies. I move that the first reading of filing policies be approved.
Actually, the motion to table the consensus will...
I can make it again. Make the same motion with regard to these policies, move to table until such time as the legal and policy committee has reviewed.
All the papers? Aye. All the papers, motion carries. Okay. With that, the second, the many are where at the public session where one who's interested in the motion here two minutes. For you that I want to take a minute. I thought it was important to take a minute and go through where we are with the budget process. There's been a lot of rumors out there, both public and private, about where we are with the budget, what's been cut, what's been saved, what's happened anywhere. Many of you weren't here at the last budget meeting because there's much more around, so I can tell that most of you weren't there. So what I want to do is just take a few minutes, talk about where we are actually in the process and kind of where our budget process is at the date, so everyone's up to speed with where we are from the one additional budget meet that we have had, okay? So if you take a look at the slides here, what you have here is basically the list of the revenues, expenditures, and the money we have available in reserves, in our savings accounts, if you will. So in the yellow section up there, it's estimated is where we are for the current year that we're in and where everything will end up. And then 2013 is the budget here we're talking about today, okay? And then 14, 15, 16 makes sense. All right, so what we have up here is revenues, how much money we have coming in from different sources, that's pretty important to know because some of those are starting to change. And then expenditures, where we spend all our money, and kind of what is the net operating deficit, if you will, or if there's a pause, I don't think there is on any of these. So it's how much money do we have as a net operating loss or deficit that has to come in somehow, okay? So if you look in the red bar here, that tells you from the first budget draft that was presented, and that's the only budget draft that we've looked at or discussed or done anything with so far, there's another draft that the administration put together for tonight, we haven't gone through that yet. But just at the last meeting, those are the numbers that we're looking at. And if you see, the difference between the revenues and expenditures for the first draft of the budget for next year is $1.8 million, that's a pretty big budget gap, especially on about $26 million in expenditures overall. All right, so that's the gap we're starting to look at trying to figure out, we'll talk a little bit about it in a minute. But the bigger concern is you start to go out and look at 14, 15, and 16, and those numbers grow by a lot, $2.8 million, $3.4 million, $4.3 million. Those are huge gaps, and certain restrictions on us, those are gaps that can only be closed for most part on the expenditure side, all right? So I want you to pay attention to that. What you'll see down at the bottom is then the different reserve accounts that we have that are allowed to be used to plug holes in your budget, okay? So that's what's down the bottom. And that was the first cut that Lisa and Ronnie put together to where they thought we should be spending some of our reserve money, all right? Let's see. I think I covered everything on it very much, yeah, let's take the next one. All right, this shows in a little different way. I like graphs, so I put it together this way. And what you can see is clearly that the expenditure side is way outrunning any projections on the revenue side. So we have huge structural gaps occurring next year and then subsequent years that somehow they have to be closed. And we're not alone in this, if you read the paper every day just about another district is starting to figure out how to close these gaps, they're no different than anybody else. And there's reasons structurally within the education system why some of these things are occurring. So really, I want you to focus on that gap and how we're going to start to close that. Next slide. So first on the revenue side, so what's happening to our revenues, why is that line kind of flapping out on us? First and foremost, over the last three years, we've lost $1,003,800. Again, the $26 million, $1,003 is an awful lot of money that we've lost. So that's why we have such a problem in that. One of the other major ways in the past that we've always been able to close any kind of gaps, excuse me, any kind of gaps we see occurring is by erasing the tax limit. You really can't do that anymore, now there's a 2% tax gap that the state passed, and that pretty much says that's the much money that you can increase your tax levy, so that's as far as you can go on raising revenues. So what you're seeing is we've lost a bunch of state aid, capped how much tax limit we can get, that really drives that curve down, so on the revenue side, there's not a lot we can do, all right? So our hands are kind of tied on the revenue side. Next one. If you look at the expenditure side, expenditure side for our district for the most part comes from salaries and benefits. It's a organization that's driven by people, so all their costs are in people. So what you have to do is take a look at where our costs going. So you can see that a lot of things are negotiated, and we'll be talking about the contract tonight, and some of the things are mandated by the state. So pension costs, for example, have gone up a couple hundred thousand dollars just in a year, so that's really causing that expenditure line to go way up. Healthcare costs, everybody knows you're facing healthcare costs, either if you have to pay your own portion at work, or you pay your own policy, you know your own healthcare costs are going up. Going up here as well, we have a lot of people, so it's a lot of money that we have in the increased healthcare costs, so that's another 187. So we're all mixed up over $400,000, just on those three first lineups. And then the other thing is on teacher wages, that's about a 4% average increase on teacher wages, and again, a large portion of our costs are in that. So you can see why that red line was going up as fast as it was, and we already talked about the revenue side, so that's creating our gap. Next slide. So what did we do? The only thing we did at the last budget meeting here was we talked about that first line that we saw, that had kind of where we were with revenues, expenditures, and reserves. We tried to come up with a high-level strategy, where do we want to spend our money, where do we want to spend our savings for that matter? And this is kind of what we came up with. On the right end, you see there's a $500,000 emergency fund, that's something called unstructured fund balance that we have in the bank, if there's ever an emergency, something catastrophic happens to a building or something else, we have the money to cover that, you always have to keep a little bit there. So we decided $500,000 emergency fund, and then take the rest of our reserves and start using it, $1,003,500 for the next two years, and then $900,000 for the following two years. And that will wipe out, with the exception of emergency fund, all the reserves we have. The original budget you saw up here for where you're at was using all the reserves to flood the entire gap, but that just doesn't make sense, you can't just go for a one-shot, one-year budget. So we decided last week in the meeting that we want to kind of spread out the reserves and figure out where we're going from there. So the only discussion that took place at the last meeting was how do we want to allocate reserves as a starting point, how do we want to plug the gaps with that? Tonight, we're going to start talking about the expenditure side, we'll see how detailed we get on it, but we want to start on a high-level approach, what do we want to do with the expenditure and things, okay? All right, so kind of sum up the fundamental premise we have, a multi-year structural gap here on expenses and revenues. For all states going to balance out, I don't think we should do that, the state doesn't have any kind of clues or indications that they're going to be helping us with more funding, so I don't see that happening. Others may have different views, but I'd be surprised if that happens. So we can't hope for that, we have to kind of make prudent decisions so that we prepare for anything that's coming up. And the last thing is the tax gap. The tax gap limits the revenue side, so we kind of got to play the hand we dealt, all right? We're not really doing a question answer, I'm sorry. So basically, and just to follow up on that, on the 29th, we won't be having a session for that, so we'll give you a chance, okay? So really, this significant gap has to be closed over the next few years, we got to figure out how best to do it. I think that's my last slide? All right, so here's the message I want to leave with you as we have speakers come up, is everyone has their favorite program, and they want to protect it, I understand that, we all understand that. But things, there's only so many degrees of freedom that we have to work with in this process. And I'll speak on behalf of the others here, we all have kids doing these same programs as all of you. We don't want to see things go away, or unfortunately, we're here having to make these kinds of decisions, so we're asking for your help in this process, all right? Don't judge us, don't start rumors, work with us, that's what we kind of need to get through this process, all right? I've heard rumors that we're out to destroy the school. Colin and I went to this school, we graduated from here, we participated in all these activities. By going here and doing these things, I believe that made a huge part of what I have today, so I have a lot of value for the things we do here. So make sure you understand that when we're looking at the things and doing these decisions, it's because we have to make decisions, it's not because we want to, okay? With that, we have two minutes for people to come up and make their statements, comment something they like. I ask you this, if you come up, and if you're going to make a comment about a program you like to keep or something you have value in, help us out, see if there's some way you can tell us how you can pay for it, how you can make it work, other places we can find the funding, we're open all sections, we're a survey on, we're trying to get as much influence as we can, so we're asking you to help us as much as you can, okay? So with that, two minutes, anyone who would like to speak, please head out by yourself. Your affiliation. I have to warn you, it's probably time for tonight.
Hi, I'm Renee Rose, thank you. I understand that there's a severe deficit in the, oh, Mrs. Levin, we're here to go. I understand that there's a severe deficit in the budget, not enough money to cover all the mandated programs, as well as all the other programs that are valued by Eden Elementary students. Despite this, we were so saddened to see that the first cut made is the gifted and talented program at the elementary school. Our children, as well as others in the district, need this program as much as other students need the mandated RTI programs. I feel that it's important that we value and address the need for all students to be challenged in progressing their education. It is a common misconception that children who are gifted students are able to self-motivate more effectively than other students. All students need guidance and support to reach their given potential. Ivy Levin has been able to teach our students a greater awareness of their own abilities, how to manage them, and how to grow intellectually. It's a common, my concern with this decision is that we would wait until our students are in high school before we give them an opportunity to participate in advanced classes. It is proven that children at all levels benefit greatly from working with their academic peers. RTI provides this to children requiring extra assistance, we're asking that children who do not qualify for intervention are offered the same opportunity to develop and exceed their current academic expectations. Ivy Levin has been a source of wonderful information and guidance to our children and to us. She has proven time and time again that she knows our kids, and knows how to help them expand their excitement for learning and be engaged in their education. With such a small cost compared to the total deficit, but with the great benefit recognized by the children as well as the school district as a whole, I'm asking you to please reconsider your decision.
Just for clarification, anything you've seen in previous budget drafts, there's not many discussions about hand cuts anyway, anyhow, so if it appeared in a budget draft, those are ideas and suggestions, nothing has been assigned in detail.
Yeah, so if I can add to that, there's, I think there's a misperception among our group that because we're in draft three, that all the items in draft one, draft two have been accepted, and those cuts have been made, and that is not, that is not the case. We're continuing to look at different ideas, but nothing, nothing has been decided at this point, so thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Hall. I am a parent of two students in this district, and I do have all of this written down there for you. If you have any questions, you can let me know. I understand, again, the reality of budget and cuts and decreasing enrollment, but please do not cut the programs and activities that mean so much to many in this district. And, you know, as a parent, I'm trying to see, understand what this common core curriculum will mean to my children. I attended the presentations and last month and realized that Eden is ahead, it sounds like ahead of what many districts are, with their teacher trainings and what they're doing, so I applaud the district for doing that. But again, I don't know that I understand what it means for their, for their education. I do, what concerns me is that the teachers are going to be forced to be, they're going to be less flexible with their students, and especially as it relates to the children in the upper level of academic performance. The children that need remedial help will get that help to bring them up to the level, we must provide that same thing, must be given to gifted and talented students as well. And several reasons for keeping the REACH program, some that Renee has already mentioned, but a lot of students, I mean, 170 students she is seeing in a week, that has a huge impact, I think that's reaching out to a lot of people in .6 FTE. The students identified for the program need to be challenged in ways that energize them and keep them interested in their studies, really feeling like they have a purpose of working towards things that they're excited about. Mrs. Levin is a wonderful resource, not only to parents, but also to teachers, I'm learning a lot as we go through all of this. And lastly, Mrs. Levin, I think Renee mentioned this too, she understands the needs of our children in ways that many people don't, such as their style of communication, their learning, plus the kinds of projects they enjoy taking up to the next level. I just wanted to read one of the district's belief statements, which I think relates directly to this. "All students should engage in a comprehensive educational experience that facilitates the identification of their talents and interests." I would also like to voice my support for the activities that really enrich their life and their experiences here at Eden Central School, and these activities include music, classes vocal, instrumental, art instruction into a place where they can be creative, and the musicals, where many kids come together to create something they can be proud of and experience a sense of community. I'm sure that all New York schools are faced with state funding decreases. Let's be the district that keeps the activities that so many put on the chopping block. Schools should be a rewarding experience for our children, and I truly believe that it is these activities that encourage them to be engaged in school and performing at their best academically. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Paula Blandino, and I am a parent of two children, one at the GLP and one at Eden Elementary. And first of all, Mr. Cerny, thank you very much for your introduction and just sort of explaining where we are in the process that is very valuable. But I'm here to address, maybe the third time's a charm with talking about REACH here, but I'd like to address the board as an advocate for my child and for the many students who participate in the REACH program at Eden Elementary. One of the proposed budget cuts, as we've heard, is to eliminate REACH at the elementary school to realize a savings of a mere $37,000, which is essentially .15% of next year's proposed budget. This program provides a much-needed service for gifted students in our district. If this program is eliminated, gifted students won't have the access to enrichment programs until about ninth grade. What message are we sending to our students when during state assessments, we celebrate our brightest students who achieve high scores and help the district secure much-needed funding, but during budget deliberations, the one program that enhances the educational experience for these same students is one of the first to be considered for elimination? The REACH program is a shining star in Eden's elementary curriculum. It provides an environment where students can delve into a subject and develop their insight while being led by an instructor who understands the way a gifted child thinks and who exposes them to a variety of educational opportunities. Karen also mentioned part of the district's mission statement, and I'd like to state a bit about that as well, because it states that "We pursue a tradition of excellence in personal and academic achievement, and that students are afforded the tools and opportunity to realize their potential." How do bright and gifted students fit with this mission when one program that allows them to pursue excellence and the opportunity to realize their potential might not be provided? I ask that you, the school administration and school board, retain the REACH program to truly live up to the mission and beliefs of our school district and all its students. Thank you.
I feel like I'm babbling here, because I'm here supported REACH as well. I'm Carrie Jacobs, I have two children who are currently in the district, and one child who has moved on. My older son, who has been guys, was part of REACH for the years that he was here, and it only enhanced his learning and his ability to want to learn for the future. REACH is a really valuable program, not just for my child or my children, but for the entire district. If you think about how many children are in the Eden Elementary School, it's about 500, and there's 170 kids that are circled by this program every day, I don't know exactly how many, but about 170, that's about 34% of our kids. And 34%, that's not, I think, a reasonable program to cut, when you're losing that many students who then won't be able to get the enhancement until their freshman, sophomore, junior year. This program helps these children want to learn, she, Mrs. Levin is able to direct these children into learning at their own pace in a way that they can understand the material. And it's not just giving a child more work to do. Reading, learning to grow inside of those programs, this program is really what helps. Our teachers, our elementary teachers, our high school teachers, everybody already has enough to do, and to focus on these kids, these 170 kids that need this additional assistance, they can't do it all in the classroom, they have so much they have to do now. To ask them to try to pull out these kids and identify these kids and work with these kids especially, it's not going to happen, we have Mrs. Levin for that. Our teachers are already working to their fullest capacity, and are already asking them to do so much more. So just please reconsider that, think of what she brings to this district, and what a great program that we already have. Thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Brodmann. Once again, I'm here to speak in favor of the REACH program with perhaps a slightly different slant. I'm here to speak as both a parent and a high school science teacher about the needs of our brighter students. In 2007, this district adopted a statement as part of its mission and belief statement, "All students should have access to appropriate educational opportunities." According to Governor Cuomo's new legislation, teachers in school districts are going to be evaluated on the amount of growth shown by their students. This system includes the use of student learning objectives, or SLOs, so that teachers show accountability for student learning growth of all students. Maintaining a 95 or better average in a subject is often not growth for our brighter students, it is simply the status quo. It is imperative that the REACH program and all other enrichment programs be maintained in our district in order to provide this growth for our gifted students. What a shame it would be for the teachers, principals, and district to be rated poorly in this new evaluation system, because our district did not support the needs and growth of our upper-level students. As a classroom teacher, I know that you can have students reading at as many as six grade levels apart in any high school classroom. I am sure that very similar situations exist in an elementary classroom. This is a very wide gap to bridge through differentiation alone. That is why we have mandated programs like special ed, RTI, and AIS. Struggling students are provided assistance from certified special education teachers. Shouldn't we expect that our advanced learners have assistance with their academic growth from a certified gifted and talented teacher as well? I urge you to keep the Eden Central School District globally competitive. According to the NAIVE assessment, graduate school enrollments of American students in math and science have declined substantially in the past 20 years, while the number of foreign-born students enrolled has risen a whopping 5.7% in the last year alone. As a taxpayer and parent of gifted students, I encourage you to keep the REACH program, as well as regrouped math classes and math Olympiade. They provide the necessary modifications that keep bright, young students engaged and growing academically. Thank you.
My name is Carol Kane, and I'm actually here to speak this evening as a taxpayer and a parent of former students. I wanted to speak again to the board, thank you for saying that the door is not shut on programs and that you are still in deliberation in considering all possibilities. I'd like to speak as a representative once again of the extracurricular programs offered by our district, all comprehensive programs, and express to you that I am once again here to also speak on behalf of my support of the music department and the extracurricular programs that they provide. I do so with a lot of experience involved with these programs, my mother was the choral director here in the district for many, many years, my father's a professional musician there, as are my relatives. I myself was a former member of the music education department in this district, I'm a student, just like Mr. Cerny and Mr. Campbell, I graduated from this district, so I understand the history and what a feather in the cap the music department is here at Eden. I would like to say that I would like the musical to be supported in the way it has in the past, and if you look at the numbers involved and the comprehensive cost, it does not represent itself as something to be eliminated. If you're really crunching the numbers and looking for the bang for your buck, the amount that all those musicals cost with over 300 students involved, I'd say you're getting your money's worth. The other thing I'd like to say is that even though this isn't in the top 12, I know that there is discussion involving music programs at the elementary school and when their ensembles are going to meet and practice, and I'd like to remind people involved in education that music education is just that, it's a curricular program where people go to college for four years, these programs are graded, there are assessments, and one part of your assessment is the performance in an ensemble. These are not extracurricular programs, they should not happen before or after school, they should be involved in the school day as part of the program supported by music educators, and they deserve the same respect and time as everybody else in the educational field. So please support all our benefits. I also want to speak very briefly in support of REACH, I was in on the ground floor, one of the founding people involved was Kathy South years ago, to bring extra enrichment to Eden. I firmly believe that it's necessary, and I think that when you talk about special education, that should be comprehensive, from the very struggling to the very gifted and achieved, and it's not just academic achievement that goes to enrichment, it's anyone who shows an exceptional talent. So it isn't just academics, if it's truly done in the right way. Thank you very much.
My name is Donna Johnson, I have two children with the need in the school system. It appears to me that we have, we need more money, and we're not going to get it out of taxes, so maybe we got to look at the way private schools come up with the money for their extra programs, or the charter schools, and try to come up with an alternate source of funding. I don't know if anything, any of the ideas that I would have would be legal, but, no, no, and you're taking it the wrong way. I came up to the track the other night, and I know how we do with the baseball, we have all kinds of it.
I firmly believe that it's necessary, and I think that when you talk about special education, that should be comprehensive from the very struggling to the very gifted and achieved. And it's not just academic achievement that goes to enrichment. It's anyone who shows an exceptional talent. So it isn't just academics if it's truly done in the right way. Thank you very much.
My name is Donna Johnson. I have two children with the need of school system. It appears to me that we need more money, and we're not going to get it out of taxes. So maybe we got to look at the way private schools come up with the money for their extra programs or the charter schools and try to come up with an alternate source of funding. I don't know if any of the ideas that I would have would be legal, but... No, no, and you're taking it the wrong way. I came up to the track the other night, and I know how we do with the baseball. We have all kinds of advertising. People that want to advertise at our school, and they put things up. It's not a lot of money, but it's some money. We get a big deficit, we got to come up with a lot of money. Nobody wants nothing cut. But when push comes to shove, things are going to have to get cut. So we can try to focus in coming up with an alternate source of money, and I don't know what it is. I have some ideas. I expressed them to Steve a couple of times. Me and Mike have had a couple of words of it. Colin would have to look into maybe the legality of some of the ideas. But if we don't get the extra money, something's got to go. I don't want to see nothing go. Listen to these other folks, they don't want to see nothing go. So maybe we can come up with some ideas to kind of get some extra funds. I don't know how much we could come up with, but if we don't start holding our budgets in line and coming somewhere else, we're going to lose a lot more people out of the state. And then the whole situation is going to get worse as it goes along. That's all I got to say.
Mark Bonham, I teach music at the elementary building. Again, I want to thank you to the board. Good presentation at the beginning. I don't look with envy on you with having to deal with these problems. And as you said, this is across the state, the kind of budget deficits we're looking at. I would differ with one statement you made, though. You said when you were showing the graph for the split in the budget, the deficit, that it was from problems or from something within our educational system, and I don't think that's true. I really do think that's more in our tax system, and I think the 2% tax cap is draconian, the way it was put down on New York State. If you look at the way the 2% tax cap is affecting everything, it really is a draconian move. So I would ask that this board maybe, what are you doing publicly to make that kind of a statement back up to the New York State Board Associations? That we need a more fair system for funding our schools. New York State is pulling funding away. It almost seems like plan budget failure. That's where we seem to be. So I just want to make that statement. Secondly, March 29th is the opening night for my musical. It is the biggest... It is one of the biggest things that happens in the district, and if you're going to have your budget meeting that night, I would hope you would have another night right nearby. Mr. Winnicky's daughter will be onstage that night, so when you're asking her to come that night, you're asking her to split herself. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
My name is Claire Roddy. I am a senior at Eden Junior Senior High School.
And I'm Grace Oma. I'm also a senior at Eden Junior Senior High School.
Once again, thank you, members of the board, for giving us the opportunity to speak our minds as students of the district. Really, honestly, we feel that we represent the student body, at least in some aspect. No one honestly wants to be negative and just basically throw hurtful accusations at you guys. I know this is a tough decision, but we just wanted to say our opinion about the programs and the sports and...
Having classes such as music, art, and extracurriculars is the only reason some of these kids come to school in the morning, myself included. These programs provide an incentive where before there might not have been one. Some of our high school seniors have gotten into extremely prestigious colleges, not only because of programs, but because of advanced placement classes. Colleges such as Prudential Institute, Penn State, Dickinson, and American University, extremely prestigious colleges that our seniors would not have gotten into without these programs. They got into these colleges not only because of their academic achievements with advanced placement classes, but also with their extracurricular talents.
Basically, I mean, if you cut these programs, getting into college, everyone knows now, especially all the seniors here tonight, it's getting more and more competitive. And colleges aren't just looking for that A-plus student who's completely focused on his or her grades. They're looking for the well-rounded student, the one who has, not only is passionate about their learning, they're hardworking, they're driven, but they're also passionate about something they love, whether that be a sport, whether that be music, whether that be art, whatever it is that makes them individual and whatever makes them unique. And the programs here, that's what makes every individual in the student body unique, gives them something that makes them themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No one's house is a second turn or not?
He didn't speak.
I kept going, I was thinking, sure, the opportunity to come back down, I have to leave the speaking. I think I want to come up with an idea just to throw on the table as far as revenue and increasing, and I think it's been somewhat brought up in the past and maybe a sensitive topic, but driving, I think, the school district has acres and acres of a valuable renewable resource in our hardwood forest, and I think it's worth considering to take a look at what would be the value of harvesting the trees that are currently rotting, falling, and dying with no value to the district. So again, it might not be a drop in the bucket compared to the $2, $3, $4 million we need to raise, but if it can save a program for under students or the job of a teacher, I think it's worth considering. Thank you.
Hi, Marilyn Yeager, bus driver. And please bear with me because I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I'm speaking as a parent of children that graduated from Eden and as a taxpayer. Couple of years ago, Mr. Bugs had given me a copy of all the state mandates, which ones are duplicated, you know, and unfunded. And I know he told me that at the time that the board and the administration cannot go out into the public and campaign themselves, but I'm just wondering, when I think about it, my daughter just told me a week or two ago, "Mom, the only thing that made high school bearable for me was the music and the art." She ended up going to RIT and got her degree in interior design, which is more towards architecture than it is decorating. And it's thanks to Eden, thanks to Mr. Shylden, that encouraged her, and the music department that gave her the confidence to go out after what she wanted. And it's the same with the athletes. I would like to see if the administration and the board can't do it. I'm sure there's a group of parents or maybe one of the unions or both of the unions from the school together, Boys and Girls Club. I know there's groups of parents where if they could get together the information of how much money these kids have received in scholarships through the music, the art, and the athletics, and how much the school could save if we could really campaign and get petitions going and getting the public to write letters to Albany and say, "Knock off the unfunded mandates," you know, especially the ones that duplicate each other. That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
I make a motion for table, section B appointments until you have a chance to go through these. Discussion, we haven't seen any of the information behind any of these appointments. And I know we have a bunch more coming up. We need to take the time to actually look at these matches. This has nothing to do with any individuals on here. Once again, it has to do with seeing the list kind of relatively short notice to approve these. These are permanent appointments, so I'd like us to schedule some time and make sure we have a chance to go through the...
These are all civil service. When we sent evaluations out, did we have some...
There was a point page attachment for each of these. That's all we have is a point page attachment for...
You're trying to change the process?
Yeah, I want to...
With the civil service, at least you have the recommendation on, we have a six-month commando to prepare for the coming... And that's why we set out the recommendations. We'd like them to change the process in the future, and then try to make it earlier so you have a little bit more to go ahead with the evaluation. So maybe we can do that. I believe, at this current time of year, we're speaking, but I believe where the time are in the civil services, you'll see some of the dates are... Most dated, we've already missed the time, the time period for the civil services by six months. I'm not opposed to changing that for the future and trying to get the evaluation piece and the recommendation out to come through. And we will be working with the other aspects, department requirements, senior requirements. We're working presently with administrators and those teachers to get portfolios, sort of dates, and we'll come in and redo that with the administrators and see what the portfolio...
We're going to meet again next week and the week after, so it's not like it's another month before the next meeting. I mean, this table, a week or two weeks. I'm going to send that any kind of time.
We cannot hear...
We'll certainly go back and check. We're discussing next week. We've been asked to look at that date, so I don't know whether we'll move that off to another date later. We will check in if we're going to be penalized in some way. We'll have to bring together a special meeting to do this.
On the table? I... Excuse me. What about the section A regarding the resignation?
Are we done there? Resignations, there's none?
Resignations, relation to the seats to board numbers.
That resignation's... Yeah, that's not... This would be accepting resignations of staff numbers.
Portion of meetings would be attributed to that type of action.
It's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
It's not on the agenda. Are you talking about filling the horses?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, we have to see approved FBLA overnight trip. I move the foundation of superintendent, the FBLA overnight trip to the New York State Association of FBLA Student Leadership Conference and competition at the Rochester Convention Center in Rochester, New York from April 18th through April 20th, 2012, be approved.
On favor?
I... Approve the UN overnight trip. I move the foundation of superintendent, the UN overnight trip to the Florida University Competition and Competition in New York. I require from the night trip, April 1st, 2012, be approved.
On favor?
I... I approve the summer tour. I move the foundation of superintendent, the annual wind on summer from Boston, Maryland, March 31st through April 3rd, 2012, be approved.
On favor?
I... Through legal... Foundation of superintendent, legal notice for the annual district meeting and vote be approved.
Second, discussion. On favor?
I... Approve ETA contract. I move that upon the recommendation of the negotiations committee and superintendent of the Eden Teachers Association contract be approved effective July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2014.
I'll start off the discussion. I'd like to thank the ETA for... What I'd have to say is a really nice working relationship as we went through contract negotiations. I was on the negotiating committee, and I thought it was a really collegial atmosphere. There was a lot of give and take as to be in negotiations, and I think we came up with an answer that I thought serves all the stakeholders of the district very well. So I do honestly want to thank the ETA for working through the process with us and for ultimately approving the contract. So thank you very much. All agree?
I... Approve motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mrs. Reed Astor, head inspector. Mrs. Marion Luntzky. Mrs. Karen Hornell. And Mrs. Marion Payton. Be appointed as inspectors for the annual meeting and joint vote on May 15th, 2012 at a rate of $13.40 per hour and further authorize the district order to fulfill any vacancies in these positions which may occur prior to May 15th, 2012, individuals from the board of collections inspector personnel.
Second, discussion. On favor?
I... Through bus use for Boston Recreation, I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation be a school bus, be approved for the Boston Recreation Department for their summer field trip program effective July 9th, 2012 through August 16th, 2012, add for the attachment.
Second, discussion. On favor?
I... Accept donation of scanner. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the donation from Rosemary Noack of HP scanner with software and cardboard to be accepted for use in the elementary school on the Mole Computer Lab current.
Second, discussion.
I... Approve refinancing of energy performance contracts. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached resolution of refinancing the energy performance contracts be approved as presented. Note, it is estimated that the district will save $64,750.15 over the remaining term, eight years by refinancing.
Second, I look at the table, this I opened, so we didn't have a support question much related to this refinancing of all-time million-dollar agreement, and Friday we can prove that, so I'd like to know some more about that. Discussion.
Yeah, I mentioned a lot about the cost of refinancing. Actually, we can break them down. It's really...
You also have a working... Shows you... They have worked with refinancing, they have worked with Cardigan Cross to draw up the requirements, and this is just an ongoing recommendation that we may get a path to save money. My question is, is there a payment that was due?
Made from...
One more session. On favor?
I... Approve... Requesting, I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, $2,012 budget be increased by $422.04, $26,180,650.80 to account for increased revenue. The district received $4,054.04 from Crystal Rock for Eden Elementary, and $406.50 from Box Tops for Eden Elementary.
Second.
My box tops.
One more session. On favor?
I... Mr. Shylden.
Proposals for how to save money. The administrative group would like to offer the Board of Education two potential in-house studies. One study would be on the realignment of our buildings and our grade levels. As we all know, our student population has decreased...
This study would involve Mr. Graff and Ms. Menkell, along with Ms. Ludwick. We would ask that Board of Ed member participate in this study, along with a senior high parent, a junior high parent, senior high teacher, junior high teacher, and the members of the guidance department, as needed. We would look at all possibilities. Mr. Graff and I've kicked around some seven, eight, and nine period day, the semester, hybrid code program, look at teaching assignments, financial considerations, and of course, all the concerns and impacts on achievement. And basically, we want the Board to consider these two studies, and we'd be willing to do them in-house as part of our administrative responsibilities. Any questions at this time?
I think my first reaction was to detail around kind of the scope, scope of work time, or anything things like that, research items, to kind of round that out, because we know exactly where we're getting at. Any parts of the story sort usually has a scope document to define what you're gonna attack, what the boundaries are, what's in school, what's off school, who's gonna be involved, that kind of thing, so I'd give you some time.
We want, before we got too far along and be accused of being put in the cart before a horse, we wanted a blessing to go forward with this, and to know we weren't going to be duplicating efforts that might be go to an outside source, consultant, et cetera, et cetera.
And then they're coming up on the high school schedule, and I do have a little concern about how biased the answer would be. That kind of study is best usually done from an outside resource, because it is unbiased, they have no actual, no favorite solution, so that's my initial thoughts on that. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I think I would want to look into it twice, and check for some issues. I'm studying the difference between the open and the accepted findings.
Speaking for the realignment of the buildings, because that's what I would be involved in the most. We would approach this as an academic study, not to make a recommendation, but to put forth everything from our finding before the Board of Education, and by virtue of that, let the Board of Education make their decision, we will be found.
And maybe we could schedule a time to sit down and talk to you and Mr. Graff more about the details of how it would work. Maybe that would be the next, in work session? That would work. Okay? Okay? Take a look at that?
Not the opening night of the museum.
No, we can, that's already been discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, I have just a couple things, actually. First, some meeting dates. We're discussing the April 16th meeting, whether or not we're gonna move that to the 17th, which is Tuesday, which we obviously come together with the Bosse's vote, so I don't know what you're really gonna do there. Also, I believe the 16th is Monday, we'll come back from the...
I believe that it's... Twenty, it was... Twenty, it was... Seventeen, you know?
Seventeen, sixteen, seventeen. So, we still have the board question, maybe on the second Monday?
Correct. Sixteenth is the Monday we come back from. So, that would mean we would eliminate the 24th, which we already have on the calendar for Bosse's table. Correct.
So, that would just affect...
It was dated since 7th.
They moved from the 24th to 7th.
And I know, and the last thing that I had there was the 29th, we may want to go back and look, I know we all compared our own calendars and previewed the district calendar, so we may want to go back and look at that date.
The 29th is the budget update, which is also the open calendar for the elementary school. Wednesday, the 28th.
Or we could do it April 2nd.
What exactly?
Update. We'll see all the budgets, we'll get it to the bureau.
So, we're gonna have the 29th.
At the same time, I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate Paul Schelpf or Shaper Barcomsolo for being honored this week by the Western York Service Council with awards of excellence. Thank you to all the administrators, faculty, and staff who attended a great evening, and congratulations to all three individuals. I'd also like to take the opportunity to congratulate all the winter athletes, you know, winter wasn't much of a winter in relationship to snow. Our teams performed very well, and all of our athletic teams were named scholar athletes, or athletic teams, excuse me. Congratulations to the winter athletes. Three, I'd like to congratulate the junior, senior high school musical for another outstanding performance. Students and staff alike, for those of you who attended, it was another outstanding year. And I'd like to go, Mr. Surratt, thank you to the ETA leadership and the membership for working with us on the contract and helping us with the budget.
A couple motions before we get to the presentations here. First of all, I make a motion that all materials put up on the website, as required by the means laws, remain on the website for a period of three years. The reason right now, what would means law requires, now beginning in February, the all materials that are presented to me have to be put on the website, but we don't have a policy or a procedure to keep them up there, and after the last meeting, they were taken down, so I think it's important to keep those materials available to people, so three years is a arbitrary time, I think, but I'd like to give the LPL, still see the information, so of course we can have these ongoing discussions.
To the left, to the F, I'm just thinking, moving that into a policy. Because that's what makes it a policy opposed to just a motion, which is maybe the other aspects that we need to clear, make sure that we're meeting all the requirements of the law.
So, we'll start with the policy, or start with the motion, and then you can call the policy. Any other clauses? All in favor?
Aye.
I propose motion. I wonder if a little policy could be updated. I'd like to see some kind of policy, if you, if you personally get your own comment, that is, that anything that comes for a vote, that has a firm date for expiring, or has to be passed by law or something else, has to be, has to have been brought for three months prior, so that we don't see things to the last minute, we can start to get ahead of things. It may take some work on the policy, on goes where, and on the last minute issue, things like that, but in general, trying to, trying to get things out.
You're talking about the prospecting provided in advance?
Correct, in advance, yes. What do you think that we have to hold on, the last minute items that we have to hold? For example, the ETA contract final person we got this afternoon, we have to see things programmed in advance, so I think we need some kind of policy to steer that.
Again, some of it's gonna be driven by when we receive it, information from, for example, from the state, doesn't necessarily always come to us on time again, so it could be days or weeks. Certainly, we try to get everything out, you know, in relationship. I do apologize for the miscommunication today with the director, the draft, not the draft, but excuse me, the red line, and the MOUs that we're looking at, we're up, we get, everybody to review. So, we make it a path, as soon as we get that material that we have, have it at the time. They ask for some things, you know, three months in advance, whether they're technical decisions or what they may be, may be very difficult.
Maybe a little disapproving is our time, is depending on the guidance, we see the lead time that that national person, but something we need to look at, just so we're on the same page. Anybody else have any... First one. Oh, on the website. Question three. That's all. Anything else you want to cover? Just move it on to... Does it need to be a question?
Yes, it's a question.
Believe me, members of the Board of Education, superintendent of arts, thank you for having me here. I welcome this opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the needs of Eaton's bright, young learners. To its credit, the Eaton Central School District has kept its elementary gifted enrichment program in some form for many years. Currently, between 160, 170 students are served through three levels of this academic program during the year. Gifted services are essential for the growth and development of young Eaton students who show advanced cognitive abilities. These include the ability to rapidly understand new information, new knowledge in an area of strength, to think on a more abstract level at an earlier age, to make connections between far-ranging ideas, and to have deeper background knowledge due to strong memory and comprehension. These abilities indicate advanced development. Children with disabilities need guidance and consistent challenge in order to grow just like any other child. However, gifted children need to be challenged in ways that often differ from the average learner. They need to work on higher levels of thinking, to work in greater depth. They need to be exposed to more abstract content at an earlier age to have opportunities for complex reasoning. REACH lessons incorporate these modifications, which hit research substantiates as promoting significant gains in gifted learners. The New York State Education Department now requires that all students show academic growth each year. Studies on this population of children by both the National Research Center on Gifted and Talented and by Dr. Karen Rogers reveal that gifted children in pull-out programs show higher achievement than gifted students who are in such programs. Students show growth of one-third to one-half of a year in addition to their annual growth, depending on the type of pull-out program. The Common Core Language Arts and Math standards were written to advance high standards for all students, but those who drafted them acknowledge that they were not written for advanced students. Eaton degree level standards will limit their learning. Some students will be ready to move beyond these standards before the end of the year. Maintaining the elementary JT position supports our elementary teachers so that they will have a certified research person to suggest modifications for their brightest learners. Gifted students can form horrible, horrible learning habits if they are not challenged at an early age, including expecting all work to be mastered easily, walking in tasks that require effort, and not developing strong study skills. Some start to underachieve, becoming careless with their work and unmotivated. I work hard on turning such attitudes around, especially when children first enter the gifted program. REACH also teaches students how to moderate aspects of giftedness such as intensity and perfectionism, being able to come together and interact with academic peers on a regular basis for insight, discussion, and increases motivation in these learners. The REACH program itself is English language arts-based, with emphasis on higher-level thinking and creativity. Its enrichment, creative thinking, and language arts skills, especially in writing, are taught to the majority of the third-grade students. While in fourth grade, a wide variety of students take enrichment units that extend science, social studies, and language arts lessons. Eaton is striving to increase student achievement and raise the number of high scores on annual state tests. Maintaining gifted and enrichment services that foster higher-level thinking and reasoning, as well as ELAs skills...